May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held April 10th?
No move, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bev, any persons wishing to... okay. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
No move, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Good news report, Deanne.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hearing about a special event that is giving Lowell Elementary 5th graders an experience of a lifetime. And it's all thanks to a generous donor who does not want to be named. Principal Diane Kennedy and her 5th grade teacher Jenna Blongren and 5th grader Abigail Kotilnek... did I do okay? Kotilnek are joining us this evening. They're going to tell us about this event and what makes it so special. So you will see pictures passing by your screen, and I will have Ms. Blongren and Abigail come forward.
Hello. I'm going to start and just explain that kind of the process leading up to our fancy dinner. We had, thanks to the generous donors, we had Ms. Manners, you can see in the picture. She joined us at our classrooms three times. The first time she came, we learned about etiquette performance, about manners when you're in conversations, manners when you're at a performance, and we were able to practice. And then the next time she came, we were able to learn proper place settings and how to eat, and when you cut your meat, you set your knife down each time. And it was a great experience. It was hands-on. The students used hot dog buns and plastic silverware to practice, and they were very excited about it. Then we actually went to a fancy meal provided by the donor family, and it was very fancy. It was set up similar to a wedding. There were place settings, and the kids were all very excited about that. And then we were able to see a play and practice our performance etiquette. I will let Abby talk a little bit about being a 5th grader and experiencing that.
Being there was just like... Sorry. It was kind of... well, not kind of. It was a really good experience because I didn't know a lot of the, you know, the things that she was teaching us. I knew a little bit of it, but not very much, and so I thought it was a really, really good experience. The play was fun, yeah.
The fancy meal, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So we walk into the room, and it's very proper, and it's just, it was so great to see the students. They were, they came in their best outfits, and they just had a different manner about them, and were so excited to be a part of it. And they were little conversation starters, and to hear them go through the conversation, and it was just such a great experience to, as a teacher, to watch that and see them in that aspect, but also to see them applying it in our daily lives also. I can definitely tell a difference. They think about manners and etiquette and just kindness when they're dealing with each other. It was a very great experience.
Well, I really, really liked the meal, and I'm glad that I got to enjoy it with Dr. Maher and Mrs. Kennedy, and they were just really polite, I guess.
Thank you.
Did you have to tell Dr. Maher which fork to use for his salad?
No.
She had to tell me not to eat my dessert first.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I think that there are a lot of adults who could use classes like that, and I will be the first to say that sometimes I sit down and I don't know which fork to use. So I think what a great experience for 5th graders, and what a fun kind of team-building class experience for your whole grade to be able to do, so good work.
Yes, and of course, I want to emphasize, obviously, it was a great experience for students and the teachers, and Dr. Maher, you performed well as well. Glad to hear that. And it was because of a generous donor family that this has made possible for our students to attend this dinner and the play. The giving spirit of our community is alive and well. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about Night of Hope and Caring and the fundraising that was done there. Late last week, I also received an email from Lincoln High School Principal Val Fox, and she wanted to let us know about a gentleman who had stopped by there yesterday or the day before she sent it, and she said he gave us a large donation to help kids who don't have money to pay for their lunches. She went on to explain that the money will do so much good clearing up large balances so students are able to take part in the lunch program again. She said, "It just makes you feel so good that people in our community see that need and want to help out." The donor wants to remain anonymous. His kids don't even attend the Sioux Falls Public Schools, and further, he enlisted the help of his brother-in-law from out of state to add to that donation. So we thought that was just a great exclamation point to put on the back end of this wonderful experience that these students at Lowell received, and just, again, highlights the caring and the generous spirit of our community.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Maher has one other additional item.
First of all, I didn't know I was going to get a shout-out from Abby, so thank you. It's great to see you again. Secondly, the... Prior to today, we thought of what are we going to do for the good news report, and Deanne put together what you have already seen. But my day-to-day started with an introduction this morning at Lincoln High School of the new principal. And so with the... as the day went on, I thought, wouldn't it be a good idea to bring the new principal and share with you, the board, a formal introduction of our new principal? Before I call him up here, I want to tell you what I talked about a little bit with the staff at Lincoln High this morning regarding the transition. And I told him that, I reminded of an event that I just took part in Saturday night, and an event that will take place later this week. The event Saturday night was prom, and while I wasn't a part of prom, nor do I supervise prom, I went out to eat. My wife and I went out to eat at Spazias. And while there, we saw a whole lot of kids who were partaking of prom. And I thought, what a time-honored tradition that is, and what a neat thing for our kids to be able to participate in. And those are some of the things, some of the time-honored traditions and some of the great things that happen at Lincoln High that we want to continue. But also, I fast-forward to this week, and being the football fan that I am, I'm thinking of the draft, the NFL draft that takes place this Thursday night and Friday and Saturday, and think of what's going to happen in that draft and the dreams that the teams have of the new people to their organizations and how they can take great organizations already. And I referenced the New England Patriots, partly because of the Patriot name, but also because they just won the Super Bowl, yet through the draft, they hope to get better. And so when I think of all of the things that make Lincoln High great, and I think of Val Fox certainly being part of what has made Lincoln High great, I think forward to the future also. And so it's with that hope of the upcoming draft. We've already drafted. Fortunately, we got our first-round pick. And like any draft, we'll see over time how well this draft plays. But without further ado, I want to introduce to you Bob Grimm. Mr. Grimm? And before I turn the mic over to him, I want to say a couple of things. We, number one, we had an excellent pool of candidates for Lincoln High principal position. Number two, I would tell you that there were a couple of things that set Mr. Grimm apart as we looked through the candidate pool and the ultimate selection. One was he had had the large school experience. In fact, given his collection of experiences, Lincoln High won't be anywhere near the largest school where he's been an administrator. So that piece was good for us. Number two, he's had great experiences in advancing the AP culture in a building. We all know that when it comes to Lincoln High School, the advanced placement culture is a very important piece of that building. The third thing that made him, or another thing that made him real attractive was his experience in turning around schools from an achievement perspective in general and a graduation rate perspective specifically. That was an important thing for us to see. And then another thing that was really important for us to see was his vast experience in working in schools with great diversity. And that's currently important at Lincoln High School, specifically and in the Sioux Falls School District in general. But as we go over time, that experience, I think, will become even more and more important. So there are a number of other things that I could go through, but those are the things that are top of mind with me when I think of Mr. Grimm. I think of the opportunity that we have to move forward together as a district. He was in town today on a day off to just kind of pick the brain and revel in the wisdom that is Mrs. Fox, but also there to meet a lot of staff and students today. So we really appreciate him taking of his own personal time to be here with us today. And as it coincides with the board meeting tonight, again, I welcome Mr. Grimm to our school district.
I arrived Saturday. I got in a little later than I had anticipated just in time to get a quick shower and attend prom, so that was my Saturday evening, and it was well worth it. Spent yesterday driving around, and I believe I just told Ms. Parker that I was marveled by that big stone house that sat up on the hill till I realized it was the prison. So I drove up through there, and I was like, oh, my goodness, I'm in trouble. I'm in their parking lot. So I turned around and laughed. Hopefully, I don't get a knock on my hotel room door tonight. But I did get the opportunity to spend today at Lincoln. And first, let me say, Ms. Fox has been... you couldn't ask for a better person. She opened her home to me yesterday. She spent her entire day with me today. She introduced me to everybody and anybody and walked me through the building and the operations. And her giving of her time is just fantastic. She's a terrific, terrific person. So I went to all four lunches, met the staff, and at the... I just finished by watching about an hour of the practice for Pippin. I won't be here for the performance on Thursday, so I thought I'd at least catch part of it. It's going to be really good. They're super talented kids. And I need to just say, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Mayer, for trusting me, giving me the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. I'll try desperately not to screw things up. That analogy for the drafting for the Patriots, I don't... I'm no Bill Belichick, nor am I any draft stock person, but I... I'm a relentless pursuer of excellence, and I work daily for the good of kids. And I don't take days off. I don't shirk my responsibilities. And I am extremely passionate about seeing all children, A, that's capital A, capital L, capital L, students be successful. Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Thank you for being here, and we're excited about seeing what the next year brings. All right. Any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
No move, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Down to 11A, Claims to Sanford Healthcare System. May I have a motion to approve?
No move, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with abstention from Board Member Ryder. Now to 11B, Claims to Ovira Healthcare System.
No move, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with an abstention from Board Member Parker. Now we move to the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you. Our first report tonight is a report on Makerspaces in the K-8 libraries. Here to report to us is our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Anne Smith.
Good evening. This report specifically relates to the district's priority area of student outcomes and specifically to providing equitable access to highly effective programs. A Makerspace is a place where students gather to invent, create, tinker, explore, and discover using a wide variety of tools and materials. Driven by curiosity, need-to-know learning, tinkering, and problem-solving, Makerspaces encourage authentic learning where students are able to learn to think like scientists and engineers, as well as to build stamina and perseverance in problem-solving while developing the imagination and curiosity that feeds our innate human desire to create. The challenge for schools is implementing these wonderful Makerspaces into a curriculum that is already overloaded. The school library has the flexibility to become a center for Makerspaces, providing time for students to experience with activities during library time or in small groups before or after school or during recess. The pictures that you see cycling through are pictures that were taken throughout this year at a couple of our schools that are implementing Makerspaces. Prior to this year, we had two elementary schools and one middle school that had begun working with Makerspaces, also known as STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, or STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics Labs. All three of these schools serve neighborhoods that have low rates of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. They were able to establish their labs through grants, fundraisers, and PTA donations. When the South Dakota Department of Education announced the opportunity for districts to apply for up to $100,000 for classroom innovation projects, librarians and teachers recognized an opportunity to empower schools in less affluent neighborhoods to establish Makerspaces for their students, who especially need the excitement and energy that comes from the maker movement. In August, the district was awarded $99,989 through the South Dakota Department of Education's Classroom Innovation Program to establish Makerspaces in the district's elementary and middle school libraries. The librarians had an in-service where they learned more about Makerspaces at the beginning of the school year, and they learned about the mini-grant opportunity that was available to them to ask for a mini-grant for their school to get $3,000 to $5,000 to establish a Makerspace. We did a mini-grant process because we wanted to have the librarians have buy-in for it. We didn't want this to be something that we said they had to do. We wanted it to be something they wanted to do. Of the district's 28 elementary and middle school libraries, 25 followed through and submitted a mini-grant proposal by October for a total request awarded of $94,850. The three libraries that did not submit a proposal will have another opportunity this summer to submit a proposal. In the elementary libraries, you'll see students coming in to use the Makerspace about one week a month. The librarians identify a week in the month where instead of having their regular library class, it's Maker Week. They report that the students rarely miss on Maker Week. Furthermore, if they schedule Maker Week for a week that does not have all five days, which would mean that there might be classes that aren't going to get to do it, the students let them know right away that that's not okay. So they're very careful to make sure that those Maker Weeks happen during a five-day week. At the middle school level, typically, students are coming in before or after school or if there is some point during their schedule where they might have some flexible free time across lunch, whatever. At both levels, librarians work with teachers who want to implement the activities as part of their classroom instruction. To measure the success of the Maker Grant, we're looking at survey results that we administered prior to starting the Maker activities, and then we'll do a post-survey towards the end of the year. So at this point, we haven't done the post-survey. However, one of our elementary librarians took this opportunity to include the Makerspace in her action research for her master's degree. She surveyed her students, her 5th grade students, with a 10-question quiz. What her question was, is... Her question was, will Makerspaces develop a better growth mindset in students? What she found is that prior to implementing Makerspaces, according to the results of the quiz, 55% of students showed a fixed mindset. After Makerspaces, only 10% of the students showed a fixed mindset. Our librarians are continuing to look for ways to expand Makerspace activities. $3,000 to $5,000 is a good start on a Makerspace. The nice thing about Makerspaces is that you really can do a lot of activities that don't cost a lot of money. Some of the favorite activities include taking apart a fan and putting it back together. Mike Christopherson has been good enough to work with the librarians, and Matt Patrick Henry, they have a laser printer that they take apart to see how it works and what's inside. And he has agreed to, when there are pieces of equipment that might be... work for that, to let them do that. So we'll continue to implement the Makerspaces. We'll do another round to get those other three schools awarded some money through the grant, whatever's left over. All the grants must be spent by June 30th, 2018. With that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the report on the progress of the Makerspaces in K-8 Libraries Grant Project, which has been funded by the South Dakota Department of Education.
Any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report and the progress of Makerspace?
No move, second.
Any further discussion?
I'm just thrilled to... I mean, I mentioned this last time. We talked about Makerspaces. I've got a 6th grader at Patrick Henry, and he loves it. He's made sure that he's signed up every opportunity he can get. But I love the fact that we're offering this in all of our schools, especially at the elementary level. I think this... it just gives kids an opportunity to take things apart and put them back together and use their brains in different ways, so.
I was just going to add, when we were about a month ago at the National School Board Convention, I went to a pre-conference on Makerspaces, and as an adult, it was very, very hard. Like, I think I'm just, I'm hard-wired to, this is how it's done, you know? And so they said, here you go, here's some stuff. And I was like, what am I supposed to do with it? You know, I think when you get older, you're just so used to having instructions to follow and things like that, and so I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids to just say, there is no right or wrong. There is no, you know, I have to follow these steps first, but I can decide what I want to do and what I want to create. And, I mean, I was laughing. They hooked all these things up, and we were playing music through different fruit, you know? And I'm like, how in the world does this work, you know? And, I mean, I can see how kids would just be so engaged in the curiosity of learning about that and, you know, more so than having just a textbook or something. And so, yeah, I agree. I think it's awesome that we are getting that, you know, in more people's hands and more kids, and getting them thinking earlier on on different careers and how things work that, you know, in their future classes, they might think, oh, I remember when I did that in the library, or, you know, they make those connections later on, so it's awesome.
Great. Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Our next report will be the Calendar Committee report. And before I turn it over to Mr. Nold, I wanted to, first of all, sing his praises. As you all know, the calendar can be a time-consuming and an emotional topic, and it's certainly something that we put a lot of thought, a lot of energy, and a lot of time into this year. And to turn that over to Mr. Nold in his first year as Assistant Superintendent, I can just give him nothing but an A-plus for how it's gone so far.
Thank you.
With that, thank you, Mr. Nold, and you can carry on with the committee report.
Thank you, members of the school board and Dr. Maher. We will go through this evening, and the purpose of this report is to present the 2018-19 Sioux Falls School District Calendar for adoption as recommended by the District Calendar Committee. And this is with the area of community engagement, and in the... This is one of the significant areas that we truly did go out and seek the community and the input of the community and the community members, staff, students, parents, as we went through this process. So it was a great learning experience that way. On the bottom of that first page, and I'll go through and try to keep up with the PowerPoint as we go through each one of these pages. If I fall behind, please let me know. But the explanation, the following document outlines the process and information used by the District Calendar Committee to develop the 2018-2019 school year calendar that would be recommended to the school board for adoption. So I will start out here. First thing, the input and information that was gathered. This first part will just be an overview of all the different areas that we looked into and tried to gain feedback and information from. And I will go into greater depth on subsequent pages here. So first of all, the Calendar Committee was made up of 25 individuals. I'll go into greater depth about that here momentarily. We also looked at area schools, so some of the surrounding schools, and then comparable school districts, and we'll talk about that coming up. But we looked at 10 local schools and then five comparable schools. We also had two community input and feedback sessions where there was 37 speakers and over 150 people in attendance with those two combined. We did also then have online community feedback, which was an open feedback survey where they could fill in information and send that to us. And with that, we had over 340 responses, 342 responses from that community feedback survey. We also participated in a parent survey where there was one survey sent to each of the households, the primary households. There was over 5,100 responses through that parent survey. We also then sent out a staff survey. Each one of these surveys were kept separate, but a staff survey where there was over 2,000 responses from staff members that were sent out to all Sioux Falls School District staff members. We sent also then a student survey where there was 2,900-plus responses from middle school and high school students in and of that. I'll go down now and break out each one of the different areas and talk about those individually and the results of those input sessions or feedback sessions that we had. First of all was the Calendar Committee. With the Calendar Committee, as you can read through there, there was 25 individuals. Made up a wide range of individuals from the Sioux Falls School District, but then also included in that were five parents and four staff members besides representatives from each of the negotiation groups within the Sioux Falls School District. So we did include the five parents and the four staff members, or teachers, I should say, because there's multiple more staff members within this group as well. And so that was the Calendar Committee that had met multiple times to be able to go through that information that we had gathered and taken and considered all those different things when we came up with this proposal that we bring forth to you tonight. So going into the breakdown of information, first of all, this next slide will look at the area schools. So the area schools, there was 10 area schools that we looked at. With each of those, Brandon Valley, Harrisburg, Canton, West Central, T., Garretson, Tri Valley, Baltic, Sioux Falls Catholic Schools, and Parker, all of which had an average start date of August 24th, that'd be Wednesday, August 24th. So relatively speaking, be that second-to-last Wednesday in August for this school year. So we tried to look at those things as to where that would fall, all of which of those 10 schools started in the same week, that second-to-last week in August, per se. The earliest which you can see on there would be Canton on that Monday, and then the Sioux Falls Catholic Schools on that Monday as well, and went all the way through to the latest of which would be on the 25th, where there was three schools starting on the 25th. But the average start date on that was August, Wednesday, August 24th. So that's the comparable area schools. Of those area schools, there was eight of which that were members of our CTE program as well, where they utilize slots out of their CTE program and participate that way in and of that. The next area that we looked at was just to look at some comparable schools or school districts, I should say. We looked at the Omaha Public Schools where they had a start date August 17th, the Lincoln School District, just to try to bring up some Nebraska flavor into that. just to try to bring up some Nebraska flavor into that, out of respects. The Sioux City Public Schools, and Minneapolis Public Schools, and Des Moines. The average start date on those, but you can see it's a much wider range. Those range starting anywhere from the 15th of August, which was a Monday, all the way to the 29th of August. So there's quite a range in those, with some of those comparable school district size-wise. Another point of data that we looked at was our community staff and student feedback sessions. So first of all, starting with the community input sessions. There was 37 speakers that spoke of those two input sessions. One of those was held at Memorial Middle School, the other of which at Lincoln High School. From those speakers, there was 15 that spoke in favor of the second-to-last Monday in August. There was 11 that spoke in favor of the last Monday in August. Five spoke in favor of after Labor Day. And there were six others that gave some informational comments. So the most of which on that, with 26 individuals, spoke of starting prior to Labor Day, split between those two times of the last Monday in August and the second-to-last Monday of August. With the larger majority of those groups before Labor Day being the ones that asked for the second-to-last Monday in August. I did break down that information then with the parents. There was 11 parents who spoke, 11 of which for the last Monday in August, and eight of which for the second-to-last Monday, which would have allowed the semester test to be before that December break. There's three for after Labor Day, and then one for alternate start dates. For the staff breakdown, it was evenly split there, two speaking of starting, so the semester test could be completed prior to that December break, and two speaking for after Labor Day. And then the students, there was five of which, all of which spoke for the semester test to be prior to that December break, which would have been the second-to-last Monday in August. And there was five others that spoke on some general comments or information or feedback that they had. The next slide that we'll look at here is the online community feedback. There was 342 responses online. With that, there was 147 individuals that spoke in favor of the second-to-last Monday in August. 84 spoke in favor of the last Monday in August, and 103 in favor of after Labor Day. So almost 70% of the individuals that had commented on that online community feedback spoke in favor of starting prior to Labor Day. And of those two groups, there's 147 of which that spoke of starting to the second-to-last Monday in August. 84 of those spoke to the last Monday in August. So still, in each one of these that we have seen, the majority are still speaking in favor of starting prior to that Labor Day break. With that, there's a breakdown again there with the online feedback, that we broke it down with community members. You can see 12 that spoke for the last Monday in August, 38 for semester tests to be taken prior to that December break, which would be the second-to-last Monday in August, and 16 for after Labor Day. Our parents, or that was community members, our parents broke it down to 67 for the last Monday in August. 92 for the second-to-last Monday in August, and then 82 for after Labor Day. And there were six for other comments of other alternate start dates. Our staff that returned feedback on the community feedback forum. There was five for the last Monday in August, five for the second-to-last Monday, and then five for after Labor Day, and two for different alternate start dates. And then our students, there was 12 of which, and they all spoke for the semester test to be before that December break, which would be the second-to-last Monday in August. So again, on the breakout of this format, which was the community feedback online, where anybody could leave comments, the majority of which, about 70%, spoke in favor of starting prior to Labor Day. And of that, 147 were to the second-to-last Monday in August, and 84 in favor of the last Monday in August. The next source that we looked at was a parent survey. With the parent survey, we sent out the survey, which was a unique link. So once it was responded to, it could not be responded to again, so there are unique links for this. It was sent out one to each primary household. And with that, we had 5,177 responses. So the first question that was on that was, would you prefer to start before or after Labor Day? With the parent response on this, there was 44.1% that elected to start after Labor Day, and 55.9% that requested to start prior to Labor Day. So it was a great rate of response there, with 40% of those individuals responding, and 5, over 5,100 responses. The second question that we asked them is regardless of how they answered the first one, so they could still comment on the second one, how far before Labor Day would they like to start? The first part on there was six to eight days prior, possibly a Wednesday. So high school semester tests can occur at most nine days after the break. 31% opted in that, 31.6%. And then the start school 10 days prior, which would allow for the semester test prior to that December break. There were 67% of the parents that had opted for that. You can see the numbers there broken down to 1,600 for six to eight days, and 3,400 plus for the 10 days prior. So that'd be two Wednes, or two Mondays prior, or the last two Mondays prior to the end of August. So that was the parent survey portion of it. Then there was again, on the next slide, information that a similar survey was sent to staff. So to all staff had an opportunity to respond to that. There's about, almost 63% of the staff that responded. Again, starting with that first question, would you prefer to start prior to Labor Day or after? 66.7, almost 67% of the staff opted to start prior to Labor Day. And then the second question of which, this is where it was the closest in the responses, out of all the three different groups that we looked at. But in that second one, how far before, there's 52.7% that had asked to start 10 days prior, which would be that second-to-last Monday in August. So, we were a little closer there, we saw a greater divide, probably there when we went from the elementary, moving up through the middle school, and then the middle school into the high school. So that was the results from the staff. And then the third group that we kept unique and separate was the student survey results. The students, again, this was sent to the middle school students and the high school students. And the response rate there was 23.6%, so there's about 2,900 respondents. But again, in the third straight group here, as far as the survey goes, the majority opted to start prior to Labor Day, with 64.4% of the students opting for that, with, compared to 35.6% opting for after Labor Day. And then on the bottom part, again, the majority opting to start that second-to-last Monday in August. There were 75.7, almost 76% opting for that. So that was the survey responses from the parents, and then the staff, and then students. You can see on the next slide, just in a visual representation of that, in the first set of bars there, that was just the first question, as far as starting prior to Labor Day or after Labor Day. And the majority of the individuals responded with both of the three groups, parents, staff, and students, opting as a majority to start prior to Labor Day. And then the second set of bars on there are just that second question, how far before Labor Day should we start? If that was the option, with the majority of which, as you can see, opting to start that 10 days prior, which would be the second-to-last Monday in August. So, as a committee, we looked at this information, so the committee considerations, I'll go through there. Area schools, the average start date was Wednesday, August 24th, 2016. That's one thing we looked at. A second thing, comparable schools. There was quite a wide range of the comparable schools, but the average there was Monday, August 22nd, as a start date. For comparable schools was comparable size of districts. With the community input sessions, there was 15 of those that opt, that spoke, that opted to start the last Monday in August, on 11, I'm sorry, the second-to-last Monday in August, on 11 for the last Monday in August. For the community online input, there was 147 requested to start the la, second-to-last Monday in August, 103 after Labor Day, and 84 for the last Monday in August. The parent survey, 56% of the responding parents that were polled wanted to start prior to Labor Day. And then 67% of the responding parents that were polled wanted to start on the second-to-last Monday in August, if starting prior to Labor Day. The staff survey, 67% of the responding staff wanted to start prior to Labor Day. And then 53% of the responding staff wanted to start on the second-to-last Monday in August, if starting prior to Labor Day. In the continuation of this, the student survey, 64% of the responding middle school and high school students wanted to start prior to Labor Day. And 76 of the responding students wanted to start on the second-to-last Monday in August, if starting prior to Labor Day. Some additional considerations that we looked at on the Calendar Committee. One of the things was the semester tests. Now, there was not hard-set data that showed us there was improved scores one way or another on the semester tests. A lot of that was a preference of when that would end and when that should be taken, with the majority of high school students wanting to have that end prior to that December break. We also looked at family time for Labor Day weekend. That was one of the considerations that we talked about and went through as a committee. Balanced semesters. We wanted to make sure that the two semesters, being the first and second, and as far as that goes, the quarters within the semesters were balanced. It really needs to be balanced for the middle schools, as they have a lot of classes that may rotate on that quarter basis. And especially then again, for the high schools, as those semester classes are based on each individual semester. We were also presented with information of having a shorter week to start the school year. That was predominantly a request from the elementaries, looking at that shorter start to the week, to kind of ease some of those younger students into the school year. We also looked at balanced days off during the school year. And I'll show you on an upcoming calendar of how we worked with that over a couple of the months. Graduation date, Memorial Day weekend. There was both pros and cons to that. Allowing people to be able to travel, because it would be on Memorial Day weekend. But then again, taking up a Memorial Day weekend, which would typically be taken for vacation. High school students involved in activities, we looked at that. There's about 40% of high school students that are back and involved in activities by that early part of August already. There were some pros and cons to that, as we heard from some of the speakers, where they liked the fact that they maybe didn't have to go into the activity, or into the school right away, where they started some of these activities, where some felt it was great since they're there already, just well get started in school. And then the final of which, which is one that does have an impact on academics, is the AP exams. And the AP exams, for this year, given year, May 12th of 2017 is the conclusion of that. We have over 2,300 students during the 15-16 school year, because we don't have the results yet for this year, that had taken an AP class, and 84% of those do take an AP exam. So that was one of the things that we looked at in there, because depending on where that started, it could or could not give additional days for the preparation of that AP exam. So that's the information our committee considered. So in summary, the District Calendar Committee reviewed all the information and concluded through all sources of input that the community, parents, staff, and students, as individual groups and as an overall group, desired to have the school calendar start prior to Labor Day. When starting prior to Labor Day, the two most requested dates were the last Monday in August and the second-to-last Monday in August, with the second-to-last Monday in August receiving the majority of the responses. When considering all given information, the District Calendar Committee opted to compromise between the two dates of the last Monday in August and the second-to-last Monday in August, by selecting Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, as a 2018-2019 school calendar start date. The District Calendar Committee voted 14 to 7 on this date. The advantages of this date are, this will increase the AP exam preparation by six school days over a post-Labor Day start. This will start school with a two-day week for the benefit of our elementary students. This will provide our families a four-day Labor Day weekend. 56% of the parents surveyed wanted to start prior to Labor Day. Of that, 67% of the parents wanted to start school 10 school days prior to Labor Day. It was a compromise of the two most requested dates prior to Labor Day of the 342 respondents to the online community feedback messages. 69% of the respondents asked to start prior to Labor Day. It's a compromise of the two most requested dates of the community input session, which held 37 speakers. We have a balanced first and second semester. It matches the CTE partner schools within two days of their school year start date. The 10 surrounding districts start during the same week as our proposed start date, with seven schools within one day of our start date. And finally, the committee compromised between the two most requested dates. The administrative recommendation, the District Calendar Committee recommends to the school board that the 2018-19 school year begin Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, as detailed in the attachment. So just go briefly through the calendar. That'll be hard to see up there, but it is online. Some of the advantages with this calendar, again, it would start, or how the calendar would lay out, it would start on August 23rd, which is a Thursday. It would provide that two-day start week. The next week would be four days, providing for a four-day weekend with that Labor Day weekend. December 20th would be the final day prior to that December break. Students return on January 2nd. And then the first semester would end January 10th, with the teacher workday being on January 11th. We did balance that break, the days off in February and March, where there was, this year and next year, I believe it's the same, the three days straight in a row there on that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday in February. We did combine it, so in February there, there'll be a four-day weekend. And in March, there will also be a four-day weekend, with a Monday and a Tuesday being off. And we took that Monday as one of the days out of April to put it into March. And the school year would end on May 21st, which is a Tuesday. And the graduation would then be on that Memorial Day weekend. We do have a balance of the semesters. I know it says on there, first quarter, 44 days, second quarter, 44 days, and then 43 for the third and fourth. But a reminder, in that first and second quarter of the first semester, there's two days that are counted in through the in-service parent-teacher conference days. And so truly, it would be as far as the student contact days, the 43 going throughout each one of those, or 86 per semester. So that is the proposal from the District Calendar Committee.
Great. You know, I'm really grateful that you guys took the extra effort to be so transparent and get the community input and really dug into this to make a decision. I think everybody got heard on this, and I appreciate the effort the Calendar Committee made. Any questions for Jamie? Hearing none. Like, a motion, please, to accept the calendar? So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I guess I'll just, from a Calendar Committee participant, you know, Jamie did a great job facilitating. Like you said, I think everyone hopefully feels like they were heard, right? Whether it turned out the way they thought it would or not. I, I think the process was, as you said, transparent. Having attended all the input sessions, people were passionate but respectful. And I think, you know, we got to hear all many different aspects and sides of it. Some things that I, I wasn't aware of, just through sitting through that. I think the one thing to note is, when we, when we did vote as a committee, we voted 14 to 7. I would say that part of the ones opposed to it were the parent committee members. And I don't know that it was for any reason in particular, although they just felt like it wasn't compromising enough, and they probably wanted to push it to that last Monday in August, to be honest. And that's just something the board has to be aware of. But I hope they, through participation in all this, understand the complexity of it all, when you get all the things that need to be considered with balancing everything out, and all the reasons that you mentioned there, it's very complex, and it affects a lot of people. But I, I think, from my standpoint, I think after all was said and done, I felt like the after Labor Day wasn't an option that the majority wanted. And it really came down to the last Monday in August, or the prior Monday to that. And I think starting on that Thursday and Friday made sense, it eased kids into it, and it gave the elongated Labor Day weekend, and it, it felt right, I think, from the majority of the committee. It doesn't mean that everyone felt that way, but it felt that way, it felt right to me. And I think everyone left there with a good feeling that we had a process in place and that everyone was heard. So, I, I fully support it. And as a, as a Calendar Committee member, was, was very proud of the process that we, that we followed to get to the point that we're at.
And I would just add too, I was also on the committee, and we did spend a lot of time talking about start date, but we also tried to be thoughtful about the days within the calendar, too. And I mean, there were things that I, even as a parent, don't think about. And one of those was, we seem to take a lot of Fridays off. And you know, the teacher said, well, when you have a special on a Friday, you consistently miss that same special every time you have a Friday off. And we, I had not, honestly not even thought about the details like that. So when you talk about the complexity of all of the things that go in, that's why we needed all of those voices at the table to remind us of some of those things that we're not aware of. And so that's why, maybe different than in the past. And so that's why, maybe different than in the past. You see, we have some Monday, Tuesdays off instead of just a normal Thursday, Friday, like we've done in the past, and tried to vary those things, too. So I would agree with Doug. I thought the people on the committee were, they were very respectful, and they really, you know, they shared, and then they went back, and they tried to get feedback from other people to bring that back. So it wasn't them sitting as a single voice trying to talk just for themselves, but they were really trying to represent either their bargaining unit or, you know, parents and things like that. So I thought it was a really good process, and I hope that people are, you know, happy with the outcome and willing to give it a try and be open-minded and see what happens. And overall, it was a very positive experience, I thought.
Anything else? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
It's now time for our third quarter financial report. You may remember that we've actually done a lot of work on the budget recently, so this may be a fairly brief report tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Veek.
I just need about 90% of the time. This third quarter report is usually pretty brief because we go through this in detail, right? You know, as we prepare for the budget and we look to see what our fund balance or estimate what our fund balance is going to be like at the end of the year. And so since that time, we do have the March financials in. We're on pace, so we thought we'd be about $1,008 or so to the good there. And the general fund revenues came in high, and most with the bank franchise tax. We're on track with that as well. Most of that, most of that revenue was set for the end of the year. On the expenditure side, we're tracking very nicely. Special Ed Fund, we're on pace as well, and that is honestly about the conclusions of my remarks. You can go back to these books from the Budget Committee if you want to look more into this. But that's about all we have for the third quarter. Of course, the financial wrap-up in August will be a lot more detailed. I stand by for questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Let me have a motion to acknowledge the report on the district's 17th third quarter financial safety.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. My motion carries. We've got some scouts here today that I think are working on a badge. Would you guys each introduce yourself and tell us what you're working on? That means all three of you. Great. Thanks for being here, you guys. All right, anything else for the good of the cause? Have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting is adjourned.